We didn't get a program. So no, like we wanna know what's going on.
Okay, it's now seven thirty. I call the meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the invitation by Mr. Morrow. Please remain standing for the collective meeting. Our dear heavenly father, we give thanks for the wonderful life that you've given us and the daily blessings we receive. We give thanks for the opportunity to live in a free country where we can make our own decisions. We ask your blessings on this council and we ask your guidance over the decisions that we make. We ask you watch over our servicemen and women as they protect our freedom and our safety forces as they protect our city. This is my prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call.
Paul.
Here.
Heathley.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Johnson. Kelly.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Mr. President, this is a request. I move to excuse Mr. Grayble, Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Have a motion and second to excuse Mr. Grayble, Mr. Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, they've been excused. We need a motion for the approval minutes of May twenty first, two thousand twelve. The motion for Mr. Henry.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, men's have been approved. Questions and appointments?
None.
Special orders committees? Unfinished business? Petitions and communications?
Uh, first communication we have is dated June fourth, two thousand twelve. The heat study council from John L. Yeller, subject to liquid utility accounts. Listed below are utility accounts under orders of ninety days. In accordance with chapter nine two five point zero eight of ordinance thirty seven dash two thousand six, this information is submitted to council and will be forwarded to the auditor of Liquid County. Parcel number zero three zero dash nine three one six eight dash zero zero dot zero zero zero. The next progress fifty five Barb Avenue, two hundred fifteen dollars and ninety seven cents. Sincerely, John L. Yeller, Utilities Director.
Mr. President, Mr. Morrow. Look to forward the list to the auditor office. Have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, questions carried. Next, communication.
Next communication, June fourth, two thousand twelve, the heat study council from John Roth. Subject abandonment of uncut high grass and weeds. In accordance with chapter nine thirteen, uh, zero four of the city's heat cut by ordinances, the below listed properties failed to respond to zoning notices for high grass and uncut weeds. And subsequently, the high grass and weeds were cut under the direction of the city. Fifty five Barb Avenue. Parcel number zero three zero, zero nine three one six eight, dash zero zero. Ninety dollars plus thirty five dollar administration fee, hundred and twenty five dollars total. Nine forty five Ethel Avenue. Parcel number zero three zero, one two eight, one forty eight, dash zero zero. Uh, total of a hundred and fifteen dollars. And two twenty seven Field Point Road, parcel number zero three zero, zero nine five four nine six dash zero zero. A total of eighty dollars. In accordance with chapters nine thirteen point zero five and nine thirteen point zero six, this information is reported to council and the clerk of council. Upon approval of council, we request it to forward in writing the above fees to the auditor of Liquid County for inclusion on the tax due process.
Mr. President. Mr. Henry. Make a motion and forward these to, uh, the cabinet office. Second. Have a motion and a second in discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion to be carried. Mr. President. Mr. Henry. Make a motion that will be received and filed, both these communications. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. Motion to be carried. That's the end of the petitions communications. Now we come to visitor section. Any visitors like to speak, uh, please approach the podium there and just state your name and address and your concerns. Take root here, someone's gotta get up and speak. Mr. Counsel. Where? You have something to say. Alright, well seeing that visitors coming forward, we'll move on to committee reports. Uh, finance and budget, on the absence of Mr. Grayble, I'll call on Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance committee met this evening at six twenty five. We had three legislative requests on the agenda. The first legislative request was to appropriate one billion ninety five thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty nine cents within the water capital improvements for the Franklin Avenue Waterline Project. It was a little complicated because there were several types of funding here. We received grant dollars, zero percent loan money, and city money. Second legislative request was to authorize and direct the mayor to enter into contract with Burgess and Niple for construction management services for the Franklin Avenue Waterline Project, waiting the bidding process. And the third legislative request was, um, to amend ordinance eleven ninety nine point oh six to change the formage. We're gonna change the chapter name to a cover injection, to cover injection and extraction of minerals. And all throughout the document, replace the word board with planning commission so that anyone, um, requesting to do injection or extraction of minerals will need to go through the planning commission, so that's most appropriate, to have that done. Um, under other items, the city impound and surplus auction will be June ninth at ten a.m. at Geller Park. Auditor Alexander expects that to be finished by about noon. There are numerous items, thirty five cars, fifteen bicycles, there's a lawn mower, large power washer slash steam cleaner. Second item, Deborah Fleming, has fourteen years with the city of Heath. Third item, the John Deere mower at wastewater sold on eBay for two thousand five hundred and ten dollars, was paid for and picked up by the new owner from South Carolina this morning. Under number four, pool preseason revenue for two thousand eleven was sixty five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Two thousand twelve was seventy nine thousand six hundred and fifty four, an increase of fourteen thousand three seventy four, which is twenty-two percent. Number five, income tax collections from mayor up about seventy two thousand dollars. Did you have anything to add? It's gonna be a fella. I can't see, okay. Uh, she has something to add, there's nothing to add.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, that's it for finance committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public services, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. The public services committee meeting was called to order at five thirty p.m. on May twenty ninth. Utility director, Mr. Geller, presented the liquid utility account. A long discussion concerning the sanitary sewer backup policy and procedures. Mr. Geller presented four pages with a few suggestions. Mr. Geller will have it ready for final review to present to council and the mayor. Next was talking about budgets for the Franklin Avenue Waterline and pump station. Both were approved by the committee and forwarded to council. Next on the agenda was the SOQ, Standards of Qualifications, concerning improvements to the wastewater plant. This is a state bidding plan. Finally, Mr. Geller, uh, talked about the future improvements needed. This included switching from gas. The clarifier is from nineteen fifty seven and is getting torn out. It's almost all recovered. Uh, visitors, Mr. Geller asked about his sewer line that is now near in the middle of Route seventy nine. With nothing else to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at seven eighteen p.m. Anything else?
Uh, I would like to recognize the anniversary date for, uh, Dan Stofan and the wastewater plant. He has, uh, four years. Other than that, everything's good.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Public safety, uh, the absence of Mr. Johnson, uh, Mr. Duff.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, public safety committee will meet, uh, next Monday at eleven, five thirty p.m. Uh, Chief Jeff, anything to add?
Uh, yes, the police department also has, uh, two boys, uh, to recognize, uh, Jessica Ortiz, seven years employment, uh, and Don Mellory, three years.
Chief Hugg.
Yes, sir, I too have, uh, two employees. Jamie Bun with sixteen years with the city and Don Worth with thirteen. That's all, thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Streets and drainage, we've got them. Uh, streets and drainage committee will meet, uh, Monday, June eighteenth at five thirty p.m. Bob, anything to add? That's all, Mr. President. Thank you. Community development, Mr. Henry.
We, the community development committee met tonight at five thirty. We had seven items on the, uh, agenda. The first one was, uh, injection wells. Mayor had asked Mr. Roth to cover this item under his per se. And so, and started it, we, the mayor, have come up with. It should be com- covered under ordinance eleven ninety nine. And to start out with, they can only do this in agricultural zoned areas. And if they do have something they have to correct to zoning and building the fields committed, and they propose to connect any, ask to approve it. And also, we had quite a long discussion of this, uh, so, be more coming on it later. And number two item was blighted properties. And, uh, John informed us that the county received over a million dollars in a grant to bid our county of blighted properties. And, uh, in addition, John has ordered it to the county about a week. We talked about five properties. And, uh, the city of North will be processing these and it does still cost to the city a fee. And properties are located at seven 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 Liquid View Drive, nineteen forty nine Hebron Road, nine forty five Ethel Avenue. And another property is on South Sixth Street here, the Grandview Intersection. And another one that they discussed was on Summit Street. And item number three was the Humane Society and they have, since they have received approval to improve their property and needs, then, uh, I think they said this wasn't the, uh, drawbreaker?
Uh, Wednesday at noon.
Wednesday at noon.
June sixth.
Oh. Now, six thirteen, Scott Lee, this date, Ralph thirteen, they were planning on doing some work up where, close to our water tower, but they have one time ago. Since they did something right, they decided to delay it till two thousand thirteen because we have submitted streets being written so much. Barrels underway, so it's gonna be delayed till two thousand thirteen. Item number five was a grass cutting report. I will cover that, I've covered that earlier. And, uh, the number six was the project updates. And John gave us a quick overview. Stat budget, state route seventy nine is moving along and they'll probably be doing the landscaping in the next couple of weeks or started in two weeks. Then after they put, do the back, you know, start having lane problems, there's a problem with that, will be delayed and be done at night time. And, uh, looking along some state roads, chain borders are minimal. With a bit of chopper. Thornwood Drive, Corv, it's ready to go out. It's been a bunch of things left. But now, law director is in the process of taking the property and, I am in domain that's been abandoned, but they have to go through court anyway. And Hopewell Drive will be closing on June the eleventh to replace that bridge. Hopefully, they should do it now, they'll be. And all these, uh, Thornwood Drive, yes, the mayor wants them to be done by time school starts, you know, so we gotta do. And, uh, Star Spangled Celebration, uh, it's on July the second. And our president, council, will be changing the council meeting that day to be posted in the local newspaper. And right now, we need parking volunteers and volunteers who with the, uh, like bounce outs. Brady. Things, and we don't get volunteers to help park, we may have the council, so if you know a community function that has to do community work, contact Mr. Roth or the mayor, so we, we need what's that, thirty volunteers jobs?
Yes, sir.
So, it's important that we do this. That's all I had, John, with a message.
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Planning commission, the absence of Mr. Grayble, I'll call on Mary Collins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The planning commission met on Thursday, May twenty fourth. There's one item on the agenda where we reviewed the plans, uh, for the new Humane Society facility. It's gonna be on Thornwood Drive. Uh, the next meeting is on Thursday, June twenty eighth. John, are you aware of any agenda items yet for that meeting?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, so we'll have further update on that.
Mr. President. Thank you, good, Mr. President.
I missed one thing. We, uh, the community development side will not have a meeting in July. Our next meeting will be six o'clock. Can you skip that?
I did not. Well, yeah. Alright, well then, Parks and Recreation, you may leave.
Thank you, Mr. President. Park Recreation and Davis Chain will meet on June eighteenth, immediately following Streets and Drainage. Do you have anything to add, Bob?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sorry about that. Induction of ordinances, ordinance forty four, two thousand twelve.
An ordinance authorizing the establishment of a capital project fund called Franklin Avenue Water Improvement Fund, and authorizing the appropriation of one million ninety five thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty nine cents. Five hundred forty nine thousand nine hundred ten dollars and fifty nine cents within the water capital improvement fund. And five hundred forty five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars within the Franklin Avenue Water Improvement Fund. Also authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into contract with T O B Services Incorporated, Forty Two Forty Fourth Road, Alexandria, Ohio, North and Zer- Zero One, to construct the new water line and pump station on the east side of Heath, according to its, uh, its receipt.
Ordinance forty four, two thousand twelve, we have a second reading. Ordinance forty five, two thousand twelve.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into agreement with Burgess and Niple Limited for construction services for Franklin Avenue Waterline replacement in this location.
Ordinance forty five, two thousand twelve, we have a second reading. Ordinance forty six, two thousand twelve.
An ordinance approving the C A U D application for Rosetta Ample East, six fifty Thornwood Drive, Heath, Ohio, North Field by six, according to proposals submitted.
Ordinance forty six, two thousand twelve, we have a second reading. Upcoming ordinances on second reading. Ordinance thirty eight, two thousand twelve.
An ordinance waiving the competitive bidding procedure, authorizing the appropriation of one hundred sixty four thousand seventy dollars within the wastewater replacement fund. Authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into agreements with Meadow High and Big Wheel and Mixing Systems Incorporated and Fluidyne Corporation Incorporated to purchase and install a jet aeration system for the digesters at the wastewater tank.
Mr. President, Mr. Morrow, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty eight, two thousand twelve. Sorry. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Paul.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty eight, two thousand twelve, we have a document. Ordinance thirty nine, two thousand twelve.
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of twenty four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars within the wastewater replacement fund to cover engineering services required to replace the box front lift station with a gravity sewer, according to proposals submitted.
Mr. President, Mr. Morrow, I'd like to make a motion to table. Adopt ordinance thirty nine, two thousand twelve. Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Paul.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mark.
Ordinance thirty nine, two thousand twelve, we have a document. Ordinance forty one, two thousand twelve, Mr. President, Mr. Heathley.
I move we table, ordinance forty one, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to table, roll call.
Paul.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes. Ordinance forty one, two thousand twelve, we have a document. Ordinance forty two, two thousand twelve, Mr. President, Mr. Heathley.
I move we table, ordinance forty two, two thousand twelve.
Uh, I've got second half.
Motion and second to table, roll call.
Paul.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes. Ordinance forty two, two thousand twelve, we have a document. Ordinance forty three, two thousand twelve.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a management agreement with the Heath Community Arts Council for the management of the Davis Chain House, according to proposals submitted.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance forty three, two thousand twelve.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Paul.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes. Ordinance forty three, two thousand twelve, we have a document. Uh, resolutions on first reading, none. Resolution on second reading, none. Come to reports of city of Heath. Mary Collins. Thank you, Mr. President. I welcome all of you to the meeting tonight and, uh, want to reiterate what, uh, Councilman Henry, uh, described in regards to the Star Spangled Celebration. Events such as that don't happen without the help of people volunteering their time and talents, uh, so that many others can, uh, enjoy them. Uh, when I look in the audience, I know I'm not telling anything that you folks don't already know. But, uh, I, it, it is, uh, the events that we have in, in the city and, and perhaps the Star Spangled Celebration being the biggest, they're the kind of things that make a city a place where we want to live. And these type of event, of events, uh, as I described in, uh, Cox Meeting, they just don't fall out of the sky. Uh, it takes people volunteering their time, putting forth the effort, uh, to make them happen. And if you get enough people volunteering, they don't have to put in a whole lot of time or put forth a whole lot of effort. When you don't, then the, the burden is shouldered by those few who are doing it. And for the city to be able to continue to host events such as this, uh, those few who have been shouldering the burden need to be, uh, have numbers added to their ranks. Events like Star Spangled Celebration, Kids First Fest and others, uh, require volunteers. So I, uh, would ask everybody, uh, that if you have a little bit of time on July second, have two or three hours, uh, that you'd like to, um, devote to, to helping make sure that the city continues to have this fantastic event. Please contact, uh, John Roth, or you can contact me and I can get you in touch with people at the Star Spangled Celebration Committee, uh, because, uh, your help would be greatly appreciated. Uh, I want to thank, uh, council for the approval of ordinance forty three on two thousand twelve regarding the management agreement with the Heath Community Arts Council. I think this is an opportunity, uh, for us to, as a city, uh, and for everyone involved, begin to work toward, uh, the goal of the project being less dependent on, uh, city money. While at the same time not having the Arts Council shoulder a burden that, uh, a financial burden that they can't, uh, quite carry at this time, so uh, I'm glad that, uh, that we're gonna be able to enter into that agreement with city approval. Uh, I hope for Arts Council Board approval, uh, later this week. Uh, and of course, pull up, take you all through the Bronx Committee, uh, as that, uh, as that moves forward. Um, but, uh, again, I just want to say thank you for all of your support, uh, in regards to the direction that, uh, that we're looking to, to move on that. I also want to, uh, just take a moment to thank, uh, members of Heath American Legion, uh, Civil Air Patrol, the, uh, Heath High School Choir and Band Programs, um, and anybody else that I may have missed, oh, the, the Board of Management of the, uh, of the airport, uh, also. And anybody else that I may have missed, uh, in, uh, that were involved in this year's Memorial Day Celebration. Um, we hosted the event this year at the, at the airport. We had hoped to have it at the site, uh, next to the F four Phantom, uh, fighter jet. Um, appreciate the help, uh, Bob of, of the Parks Department in getting everything out there, you know, for that event. And when the time came, we have to make a call as to whether we were gonna have the event outside next to the Phantom, or if we were gonna bring it inside to the hangar, uh, that's right there. Uh, right at that time, the heavens opened up again, uh, with rain. And so, the decision was made to have it in the hangar, but I think it was a very good event. Uh, I think, uh, that the band and choir programs really added a nice touch to the event. I hope that that will become a long run tradition, uh, with the band and vocal music programs at the high school, if they be involved in that. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, in my comments, uh, and to the group assembled there that day, um, I made mention of the fact that today is the seventieth anniversary of the Battle of Midway. Uh, perhaps, perhaps the turning point, uh, in the war in the Pacific during World War Two. Obviously, sometimes that date gets overshadowed by the events, uh, that took place on June sixth, uh, coming up on Wednesday. Uh, but in that theater of war, there's probably no, uh, bigger, uh, day, uh, in World War Two. Uh, so, again, thanks to everyone involved in, in that event. I think it was another great event. We had another great turnout. My hope is that, uh, as we continue to build this event, uh, each year, we'll continue to have more. My hope is that, uh, as we continue to build this event, uh, each year, we'll continue to have more and more people attending. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you. Andrew Alton?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome everybody, especially the Davis Shay House Youth Club. With that, I think, uh, in my regard.
Uh, turn down there with you, please.
Good to see the Shay House group here. We talked about volunteers a lot, right? There's a good example of what volunteers are. They spent thousands of hours over there and it cost the City of Heath, and I do appreciate you folks. Jan, good to see you. You did a good job. And talking about Midway, uh... Got to see a lot of those places. Made it all before they were cleaned up, and it was quite touching. To find, and, uh, especially waking up and see the ships turn, you know, sticking up. And at that time, one of the guys told me, he said, "Fleet, did you have anybody killed on these islands?" I said, "No, I'm just crying for the ones that didn't die." And it's really touching. And, and, uh, Suicide Cliff in Okinawa, where the Marines, right, where they invaded Okinawa. There was Suicide Cliff there, and that was the most deteriorating, demanding anything because we found, we found a pile of skeletons and bones as thick as this whole front end there, you know, of those people that killed themselves, you know, before the Marines got there. But I don't think they will suffer as much as, uh, some of the people over in Syria right now, so we apologize for those poor people. And Mark, thank you for giving us a chance to learn the nature of it and enjoy it. And the choir and the band, they were... People judge the band at hospital for sounding out on the field, although there's no acoustics. But inside that hangar, they sound like a million dollar man, and so did the choir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to welcome everyone and give a special thanks to the Davis Shay volunteers and particularly to Jan Wilkin for all her years of service to the community and for all of you for giving us something that's unique to the City of Heath and something that we can be proud of. So, thank you for all that you do. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to the guests, Davis Shay House volunteers and, and, uh... Mr. Duff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome the volunteers to my neighbors. And I just, I can say again, thank you, and, and, and people in the third quarter letters in the house. One thousand one hundred and forty-six houses later. Waited. I really appreciate it. And, uh, with the volunteers, what can we say? It's just amazing, uh, to get to events over there, it just, uh, kind of gets me to chill. You, you have such a wonderful job, but, uh, should be, uh, keep up the work.
That's all I have. I just want to mention that, uh, Mr. Crable, four days tonight, he wouldn't be here. And then, uh, uh, Mr. Johnson was in caucus, or before caucus committee meetings, and he wasn't feeling very good and was kind of on the sick side, and he said, "Get out of here, we don't want to get sick." Between him and Bill, so that's why he isn't here tonight. And, uh, our, uh, clerk of council, Lynn Hunt, uh, her, uh, daughter had a birthday today, so she went to take the day off to, to, uh, go see her. So, uh, in her place, we have, uh, Debbie Whitefoot sitting next to her. Do we have anything to say tonight?
Not too much to say.
Very nice. Start down here, uh, John Geller, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing to add.
Oh, Geller?
Nothing.
I'm Ralph.
Ralph.
Keith Shepherd.
No, sir.
Keith Duff.
Nothing, thank you.
That was quick. Their new business, they're reading the bids.
They're miscellaneous, President?
Yes, I, I're miscellaneous. Um, I, I want to give you, uh, I, I just want to mention that. At our next council meeting, uh, I intend to recognize, uh, a group of high school students. And, um, I want to invite in particular, uh, volunteers, uh, at the Davis Shay House to maybe attend, uh, next, again, in two weeks as well, on June eighteenth. Uh, because I intend to recognize a, a group of high school students through a program called PAVE, which is for the prevention, uh, of violence and, and helping, um, teenagers, uh, better deal with bad situations that they may come up against. And there are a number of students that are in that program that, uh, come from Heath High School. Uh, much of the leadership of that program comes from Heath High School. And it might be good, I think, for you to see that there are young people coming up through the ranks who also understand the need to volunteer. And I think it might be good for them to see that their need to volunteer doesn't stop once they graduated from high school. That it's, uh, 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 an effort that you should try to put forth, uh, throughout your lives. I think that you all would be a good example to them, uh, of that as well. So, I just wanted to kind of preview that for our next council meeting. Also, under miscellaneous, I just want to make sure, a public announcement, that our July second meeting will be at twelve thirty. About seven thirty, as usual, Monday, it'll be at twelve thirty, so that we can, uh, have a short meeting and then move on over to Geller Park to be ready for the celebrated celebration that night. Uh, anything else under miscellaneous? If not, here. So, move, have a motion, second, just here in all favor?
Aye.
All right, so, we are here.